Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At regular meetings, the city council takes formal actions on items, on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business in the city, of the city. Agenda packages are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting will also be televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is also available on the city's website. Through Proclamation Number 2020-28, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to Open Public Meeting Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions for items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. So with those housekeeping issues out of the way, also remembering that we're social distancing, wearing our masks, having sanitization for and in the room, and making sure we're keeping our distance. I just want to continue that, uh, that example so that we can, um, keep our, our city healthy and our employees healthy and everybody around us, our family and friends. So with that, uh, can we go ahead and have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Alvarado... Councilmember Maloney?
Present.
Councilmember Milne?
Present.
Councilmember Roach?
Present.
Councilmember Serrano?
Here.
Mayor Protan Brajas?
Mayor Protan Brajas is excused tonight.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here. So did we get Mr. Alvarado?
Not yet, but I thought I saw his face. Councilmember Alvarado-
Councilmember Alvarado, are you on tonight? If, um, if he's here, I want to make sure that, uh, do we have him on the line? Can you provide some assistance, Mr. Funfar?
He doesn't look like he's on the, the list of, um, people on the GoToMeeting from what I can see as the participants.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. I do not see Councilmember Alvarado.
So we do still have a quorum, and if he joins us a little bit later, then, uh, then we'll, we'll add him on. Thank you for that. Uh, why don't, uh, you please rise with me and for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. Next, we have a consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council or members of the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. So there's quite a few on these tonight, so just bear with me as I read through these very quickly. A, approval of meeting minutes, uh, to approve the minutes of the City of Pasco Remote Special Workshop and Remote Meeting held on November 16th, 2020, and Remote Special Meeting and Workshop held on November 23rd, 2020. Next is the Bills and Communications to approve claims in a total amount of $5,179,0271.14. And next, we'll go to Item C, Ordinance PMC Amendment, Section 3.15.010, the TPA rate change, and that is to approve ordinance number 4507, authorizing a change in special lodging assessment to $3 per night and further authorize publication by summary only. Item D, Renewal Agreement with the Visit Tri-Cities for the Promotion of Tourism Management, to approve the Renewal Agreement with the Visit Tri-Cities for the Management of the Promotion of Tourism and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Item E, Resolution to Ratify Emergency Order Related to COVID-19, and that would be a motion to, uh, to approve Resolution Number 4016, ratifying Emergency Order 2020-001.1 relating to the Extending Temporary Sign Usage within the Pasco Municipal Code. Item F, December 2020 Council Meeting Cancellations, to approve the cancellations of the December 14th and 28th Council Workshop Meetings and December 21 Council Regular Meeting. Item G, Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission Appointment to confirm the mayor's appointment to Carly Coburn to the Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission to Position Number 7 with the term ending on December 31st, 2021. Item H, General Fund Monthly Report, October 2020, and that would be informational only, no action to approve. Now, Item I, Resolution Segregation of Local Improvement District, LID Assessment, to approve Resolution Number 4017 relating to the Local Improvement District Number 150, uh, providing for the segregation of assessments for certain parcels consistent with RCW 35.44.410 and ratifying and confirming prior acts. And that would be a motion, yes, for the consent agenda. So that is a consent agenda. If anybody, uh, if nobody has a comment or any, any, uh, changes they would like to make, I would, um, acknowledge, uh, Mr. Maloney, if you would like to make a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, Councilmember Maloney has approved the agenda as read. Do I hear a second?
Serrano, I'll second that.
Okay, Councilmember Serrano with a second. Uh, can we have a roll, uh, roll call, please?
Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Councilmember Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Milne?
Yes.
Councilmember Roach?
Yes.
Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Great. Shall we try Mr. Alvarado one more time?
Uh, I think he will come on when, when he's ready, so we have, uh, we have a majority.
Yes.
And so thank you very much for that. The, the motion passes. All right, next we'll go to proclamation and acknowledgements, none listed. Uh, reports from committees and/or officers, uh, any council members, would you like to report anything that, uh, that you have experienced or, or would like to report to the public? I, I would like to just mention that, uh, last Friday was a very busy day for me. Uh, I met with our 16th Legislative District, um, leaders that, uh, uh, that joined us. There was three of them and, uh, Mr. Clicker, um, Mr., you want to help me out here? Give the name, I didn't write him down. Senator-elect?
And, uh, Skyler.
Skyler, Skyler Rude, um, uh, but what was it? The, Mr. Clicker and who was the other one? Dozier, Dozier, yeah, so Clicker, Dozier, and Rude. Uh, we met with them to discuss, uh, and also with Brianna, um, and, uh, we, uh, discussed our legislative priorities. I think it was a very good meeting, uh, the manager, Dave Zabel, and myself were able, uh, and Brianna, of course, were able to go through all our, uh, priorities, um, and talk about each one of them and, uh, really emphasize on the need that we have in our city to, uh, to address those legislative priorities. So, uh, with that, oh, and also, uh, I participated in a video that we sent out to the governor and our community members, um, addressing the fact that we are adhering to his orders, uh, the governor's orders, but to, uh, encourage him to please consider our small businesses and, and allowing them to open and, uh, and open safely, not just open, but open with all the, uh, administrative controls in place to make sure we maintain a safe, um, a safe environment in these areas. So, uh, that video, if you haven't seen it already, is on YouTube and it's coming out. It'll be out on our website probably tomorrow, uh, on our Facebook page, but also, um, our Christmas tree lighting that we did over here at the Pioneer Park. Um, I hope that the community, um, just celebrates this beautiful holiday and, uh, make it the best we can, so thank you for that. Anyone else? All right, then we'll move right along to hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. First, we will have, uh, an ordinance, 2019-2020 Budget Supplement, and this will be, uh, a, a hearing. So before the public hearing, I will ask staff, Director Recha, uh, to, if she has any comments and to fill us in on this subject, please?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and evening, council. Uh, no big changes from what was presented to council, uh, on our November, uh, workshop meeting. Uh, there is one exception, uh, which is a $1.3 million addition to the Medical and Dental Fund for both, uh, revenue and expenses. And once again, this is one of those, uh, balance sheet item changes, and just how we change it, uh, requires, uh, council authorization at times as well. Um, so other than that, um, everything that we have presented to you in the past, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Recha Sigdell. Um, does the council have any questions of staff before I open this hearing? Okay, and we did not get any notice of anybody else wanting to speak up on this, so I'm just going to very briefly go through the for, uh, formal, uh, three callings of, of this announcement. So... Uh, this is the first call, for anyone who would like to speak on this subject, second call, and third call. Okay, I'm going to close this public hearing. Now I will ask for a motion from council, uh, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would always have to reset my, uh, screen on this. It's a bit of a bear, so my, my apologies. One second.
Take your time, Councilmember Maloney, I understand.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4509, amending the 2019 to 2020 Biennial Capital Budget of the City of Pasco by providing supplement thereto and further authorize publication by summary only.
Uh, before, before we continue that motion, Councilmember Maloney, I believe you read the second motion. We are, uh, we're going to start with, uh, adopting ordinance number 4508. Would you like to reread that, please?
Yes, thank you. My, my, my sincere apologies. I move to adopt ordinance number, uh, 4508, amending the 2019-2020 Biennial Operating Budget of the City of Pasco by providing supplement thereto, by appropriating revenue received in excess of estimated revenues for this current year and providing transfers and adjustment authority and further authorize publication by summary only.
Thank you.
This is Councilmember, I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a seconded by Councilmember Roach. Um, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, oppose, same sign? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Councilmember Maloney, would you like to read the second motion, please?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I, I move to adopt ordinance number 4509, amending the 2019-2020 Biennial Capital Budget of the City of Pasco by providing supplement thereto and further authorize publication by summary only.
Thank you, there's been a motion. Go ahead, uh, there's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I'll second that again.
Okay, there's been, uh, a second from Councilmember Roach. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Sorry, Mayor.
Right.
Uh, I just had one quick clarifying question. I probably should've done this earlier. As you can tell, I'm a little distracted. Um, I just had a quick question on the school impact fees, why we're actually a quarter million over what we projected on the expenses.
Uh, yes, absolutely. Um, we, we do not retain any of the school impact fees, so, um, uh, essentially, we estimate, um, our, um, receipt, uh, receipts, essentially the revenue, and we get to keep, uh, I want to say $17 per, um, per, uh, permit for, as per our contract with the school district, and then we have to remit, um, the, all of the revenues, uh, to the school district. Uh, so this is very highly dependent on our growth overall, and as you will see, a large amount of revenue, not just in this fund, but in some of the other funds as well, are due to, um, our construction being extremely strong. Um, so that is the, that is the increase that you see, uh, at this time. And we're always, uh, trying to be a little bit conservative when we are budgeting for, uh, items like revenue, and, uh, we did the same thing with this fund as well, when we budgeted this back in 2019.
Thank you for the explanation, and I apologize for being out of process there. So, I don't know if we've left off where we need to redo the vote, or if not, um, I mean...
There's, there's a motion on the floor, uh, and it's been seconded, and that is to move to adopt ordinance number 4509, amending the 2019-2020 Biennial Capital Budget of the City of Pasco by providing supplement thereto and further authorizing publication by summary only. So with that, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we'll go to the next item, and this is an ordinance, uh, 2021-2022, Operating and Capital Projects Budget, Second Reading and Passage. Uh, Director Recha, do you have anything to add to this report?
Evening, um, Mr. Mayor. Uh, no new changes. Um, the budget is, and the capital, and both capital and the operating budget, um, are, uh, exactly how we have left in from our discussions throughout the many weeks in November. Um, so I'm here to, uh, answer any questions you may have at this point.
Thank you, Director Recha. And before I open the hearing, does the council have any questions of staff? Okay, I want to open up the hearing. And there has been nobody, uh, that has, uh, signed up to discuss this topic, so, uh, that's the first call, and I'll do a second and a third call for public comments regarding this topic. And I'm going to go ahead and close the meeting. And Councilmember Maloney, would you like to, uh, make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 4503 for consideration of the City of Pasco Biennial Operating Budget for 2021 and 2022 and further authorize publication by summary only.
Thank you, there's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilman Milne, I'll second that.
That's, uh, Councilmember Milne with the, the second, and that's to move for the adoption of the second reading of the ordinance number 4503. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? It passes unanimously. Councilmember Maloney, for the second motion, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to, for the, uh, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 4504 for consideration of the City of Pasco Biennial Capital Projects Budget for the year of 20, 2021 and 2022, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Okay, there's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second, Serrano.
Councilmember Serrano with the second, and that's to move, uh, for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 4504. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? It passes unanimously. Thank you. And I just want to make it official. I, I did close that hearing, right? Okay, I did close it. All right, thank you for that. And I would like to just make a quick, brief, uh, pause. I would like to tell the public that, um, because of how many items we're going through here tonight, uh, we specifically asked the council to, you know, double check, make sure they spend a lot of time reading and, uh, going over these items in this, and this meeting tonight, it's not something we're just, uh, winging at this point. Uh, we do have a lot of items, but we asked council to please study it very well, and, and if they had any questions, obviously they'll bring it up tonight to make it public, but, uh, just wanted a pause to, to make that very clear, uh, although we have, just because it may look like we're trying to get through this as quickly as possible. So I appreciate the council's patience and their, uh, the time that they spent studying these items, so thank you very much. Next, we have ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. So first, we have an ordinances, administrative, professional, and management wage and salary plans. Uh, City Manager Zabel, do you want to kick us off with that?
I will kick this off, and I, I think I am going to ask the, uh, HR director to, to share a couple of her thoughts, uh, when we get a little further into this, but... So this typically comes to council on an annual basis for our, uh, professional technical folks, non-rep, and our management staff, uh, these are folks that aren't represented by unions, so we don't have a collective bargaining, uh, agreement with these groups. Uh, they number about 120 to 125, depending on any particular time. And so they're a good segment of our, uh, good segment of our city. They, you know, we're talking about engineers and planners, the administrative support staff, as well as your managers, department heads, uh, code enforcement, you know, any number of those kind of general, uh, administrative, uh, functions that the city does. So annually, we bring to council, uh, an adjustment, uh, to the wage scale since we don't have a collective bargaining agreement with these, uh, groups. And, uh, this year, we're proposing to council, um, a one and a half percent, uh, increase uh, from a cost of living allowance adjustment. And I did note in there that, uh, uh, June to June and July to July, uh, differ a little bit for 2020, and those are a couple of the standards we use, uh, with respect to CPI. June to June was .8%, July to July was 1.5%. And then, um, I'll talk about the benefit side in a couple of minutes, and I, I want to, uh, share with council just some thoughts on, uh, the one, pushing more towards the 1.5% and what that's based on. As council's well aware, with not only our, our labor agreements, with our police and fire and, and, uh, public works units, um, we've also been trying to work to make our, our salaries for our professional technical folks that aren't, um, and, and management that aren't, uh, represented, uh, competitive. And that's, that's been a bit of a years-long process. That's not something you can do in, in one cycle, and, and, uh, Mayor, you've been on the council a long time. Uh, we've had, most of the council has been on at least one iteration of a labor agreement now, and, and you've kind of heard the spiel a little bit. Uh, you've also heard it as it relates to these two groups as well. And, uh, you know, certainly, uh, mainly maintaining some level of competitiveness from a salary and benefit side, uh, allows us to retain our, our employees and allows us, uh, a great recruiting tool so we can try to get the best possible folks to fill our vacancies to serve, uh, the public here in Pasco. So that, that, uh, in my mind, we're, we're, we're still not entirely competitive. Council did, I think, take a big step for some of the, a no, actually a number of the classifications, uh, last December when we did the adjustment. So that kind of created, uh, a little bit better of an internal parity. So from a internal parity standpoint, uh, we're looking good compared to where we were two years ago, or four years ago, or six years ago. And we're still, we might be, we, we maybe lag a little bit on the, on the salaries, but we're, as I say, we're not, we're not in the average, but we're competitive. We're not, we're not getting people leaving entirely because they can make more money someplace else. We do, however, uh, are lagging pretty well on, on, on benefits. And again, uh, this, uh, this particular benefit has to do with, uh, uh, city participation in the 457 plan. We do a lot, we do have a 457 plan, and for, I think, all of our, um, represented units now, the city makes a, a contribution to their 457 plan. And, uh, I shared a count, uh, email over the weekend with council, uh, with a little bit of logic behind this, but I want to, uh, talk a little bit here, uh, tonight as well and just remind you. So we, we don't have a, uh, employer benefit on the 457 plan side for these, either the non-reps, the non-rep technical, uh, professional, or the management group. Uh, 1% isn't competitive, but it starts to march us towards competitive. And so, as we did with salaries, you know, it's, it's kind of a, a bit of a plunge where you get in a little deeper and a little deeper, and you do it as you can kind of afford it. And, uh, that's, that seems to be a strategy that works pretty well with all of our units, as well as these two, uh, employee groups. And, uh, so I'm proposing a 1% city contribution, uh, for these two groups for their, for a 457 plan. And, uh, I will just share with council, I would expect, I would share with you that you'll probably see that a couple more times next year and the year after, before it's over to get them to kind of to a level where, where other employees... There's employers that are far more than that locally, and then there's employers that are right out about that. And so, not, not trying to make us the premier pay and benefit, uh, city, but we, again, trying to work on that competitive piece and, and, uh, if, if Director Chapin is on the line, I do want her to speak a little bit to some of the, what she's heard in this regard, uh, with respect to, uh, exit interviews of employees that have left for other employment, uh, at other government agencies.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and council. Uh, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Good evening.
Thank you. I, I take this opportunity to share with you that, yes, in human resources, when folks leave employment, we do, do an exit interview with them, and what we've seen as kind of a pattern is that specifically locally in the other cities, the cities are making a contribution to the 457, um, for folks that are in public service. And we are not competitive at, in that at all, not just in these two groups, but, um, we addressed that in bargaining a few years ago when we weren't able to be competitive with our comparables for our bargained members within the city. And so, we continue to lag behind, and we have had direct information from our people that are leaving to go to work for other cities that part of it is, um, they are looking forward to what they will be able to afford to do when they retire, and part of that is the benefit that as public employees, we have both the Department of Retirement, Systems Retirement, but we also have the ability to contribute pre-tax to a 457 benefit. And so we really tried to listen to that and recognize that, uh, because of us not having a contribution through the city, it not only limits the applicants that we receive for different positions, but also, uh, is an encouragement for people to leave. I even had a person in my HR office that left to go to work for a competing city because that was one of the main benefits that we were not receiving here. So it, it really is a recruitment and retention tool that I feel like the city really needs to address.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
So with that, we'll certainly, uh, take any questions council may have, and we'd recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Director, or, uh, Manager Dave Zabel. Any questions from council, I, yeah, I'll just, any, any question from council first?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Mr. Zabel and, uh, Director Chapin for bringing this up. Um, I know this has been a longstanding issue is to try to, you know, with, with a city that's growing as quickly as ours, maintaining staff and maintaining and being able to hire, uh, you know, top talent is, is really important, and I know it's something that, that we've struggled at in the past, and that's why we've made the adjustments we made in the past. So I, um, I think this is a modest and reasonable, um, um, improve, improvement of that, of, of, of the compensation for some of these employees. So, um, I know we, we can't, we won't get there in just one, one, one big bite, but, um, if we keep on nibbling away at it, I think we'll get there. And, and from the budget we just approved, and I believe this is already included in that, is that correct, Mr. Zabel?
That is correct.
So I, I think that when we look at, at how that, that budget was set up, I mean, as you said, Mr. Mayor, um, we all poured over that in, in great detail to make sure that we were comfortable with what, with what that said. And I think this is, um, um, obviously, we're, we're managing the city's finances well. We're, we're, I think, we're able to create the operations and capital, uh, projects that we need to create for, to make the city in a good state, so I'm, I'm supportive of this action.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anybody else? Well, I would just like to say that, uh, like any other corporation or business, we have to be competitive, and, you know, it really is stressful on the employees when you work hard and you're growing as fast as we're growing, and, uh, they feel like they've made strides, and to not compensate them and at least make it where it's competitive with the, uh, with, with our neighboring cities, and it, it makes it a challenge. And when you lose talent like that, it takes quite a bit more to get somebody up to par to doing that work, um, if we're not going to be competitive on a salary stage, so... So, uh, I agree with, uh, I agree with this motion. I think that, uh, taking a little bit of a time is, is wise and, uh, again, fits in our budget. And, you know, there's so many other things, uh, I was talking with, uh, Manager Zabel and, and Director Adkai earlier about some other things that we're hoping to see in, in our Pasco. And it makes it really tough to find the budget for everything, you know, and we wish to see some things that, that are quite attractive and we're, we're gonna keep striving to do that. But, um, but it all starts with, with our employees and, uh, the dedication they have to this place. And if we make it competitive, they won't spend their time looking elsewhere. So I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement. So with that said, and with no other comments, I'll give it one more second. Councilmember Maloney, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four five one zero, providing for certain adjustments in the administrative slash professional exempt and non-exempt wage plan beginning January tenth, two thousand twenty-one, uh, first full pay period of twenty twenty-one, and further authorized publication by summary only.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that. This is Councilmember Roach.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Roach, and that is to adopt ordinance number four five one zero, providing for certain adjustments in the administrative, professional exempt and non-exempt wage. So with that, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Pass it unanimously. The second vote, Councilmember Maloney, for motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four five one one, providing for certain adjustments in the management salary plan beginning January tenth, two thousand twenty-one, the first full pay period of two thousand twenty-one, and further authorized publication by summary only.
Okay, there's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes, this is Councilmember Maloney, seconded that.
Seconded by Councilmember Milney, and that's to adopt ordinance number four five one one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And pass it unanimously. Thank you for that. Go to the next item. Resolution extending inter-fund and intra-fund loans. Director, uh, Richard, would you like to report on this?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a part of your budget package as well. Uh, and essentially, uh, two loans. One is an intra-fund loan where the general fund, uh, would be loaning out some, uh, money to our Marina, uh, fund. And, um, the Marina Fund has always been one with very little reserves by design. Uh, however, the, uh, the collapse of the dock and damage of the first dock and then the damage of the second dock and the mitigation that, uh, mitigation work that will need to happen has made cash flow issues, uh, and we're trying to mitigate that via this loan. Um, so we are asking council to extend, uh, an already approved loan, um, because we were not anticipating the, the second dock to have, uh, been damaged, uh, in the last storm. And the second part, uh, is essentially our ongoing conversation, uh, with EDA is regarding, um, a loan from our water service to our process water reuse facility service. Uh, and we're waiting, uh, for both certain requirements to be met, um, and for our federal and state, uh, grants to be issued to us. Um, so we know that those funds are coming and they might come at any moment. And in fact, um, I believe, um, Public Works Director, uh, Worley had mentioned that they could come before the end of the year. But we did not want to take that chance and are asking, uh, council to extend that loan as well. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Director Richard. Any questions from council?
Councilmember Roach, I have a question for you, Director Sigdell. Um, is there any chance that the, uh, grants would not come in?
I, I do not believe that there is a chance for that, but I see Mr. Worley has jumped in, so I would like him to answer that question.
Yes, I'd be happy to try to answer it. The, the issue that we're waiting on, on that one grant is just the formalization of the acquisition of the easement from the Department of Natural Resources. And anytime you deal with state agencies, the process seems to take longer than you would expect. And so really that's all we're waiting on is the final paperwork where D N R grants us the easement. And as soon as we give that, as soon as we get that, we were able to give that to the, uh, Department of Commerce. And then they would say, yes, okay, now we can give you the loan money. As Director Sigdell mentioned, I had thought that we would have that by the end of the year because we got all the paperwork submitted to D N R. Um, and it's taking longer than I anticipated again. So I would love to be able to say we could, we will get it, but, um, there's, there is no guarantee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach and Director Worley. Any other questions from council? Well, I guess, I don't know if you heard me, uh, Director, uh, Councilmember Roach, but I giggled because I had the very same question. I was wondering, uh, you know, what, I should hate for this not to go, uh, go through. However, this is where it, um, you know, and kudos that we even have the resources to be able to do this. Um, it's not easy and I, I think by, uh, because we've been vigilant and frugal, uh, that we are able to, even able to do this and appreciate that very much. Uh, but I, but yes, I had the same question and, and thank you for that explanation, uh, Director Worley. So with that, um, Councilmember Maloney, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I move to approve resolution number four zero one eight, authorizing the extension of intra-fund loan repayment from the general fund to the city's Marina Fund and allowing all necessary budget adjustments.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. This is Serrano.
Councilmember Serrano with the second, and that is to approve resolution number four zero one eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, oppose same sign? And pass it unanimously. Okay, uh, Councilmember Maloney, would you like to make the second motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move to approve resolution number four zero one nine, authorizing the extension of intra-fun, fund loan repayment from the water utility to the process water reuse facility utility and allowing all necessary budget adjustments.
Okay, there's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it. This is Councilmember Roach.
Seconded by Councilmember Roach, and that's to approve resolution number four zero one nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And pass it unanimously. Okay, next item, item C, resolution that's the, it's the bid award for the Northwest Area Sewer L I D project. Director Worley, would you like to report, uh, on that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, for this item, I am going to turn this over to our C I P manager, Maria Sarah, to cover this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, we're here to present to you a bid award for the Northwest Sewer Area Project. This is to build improvements associated with, um, project, actually it's an L I D one five one. And it is for building a sewer tranq lane from Harris Road towards the northwest area of the city, the biggest area to be developed in the city. And, um, we received eight bids that were very competitive. We posed and recommend award to our lowest bidder, which was responsible and responsive. And that is Big D's construction of Tri-Cities, uh, in the amount of one million seven hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, with fifty-five cents. If you have any questions, I will be happy to address those.
Thank you. Appreciate that report. Uh, any questions or, or comments from council?
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano. Um, do you foresee potential of change orders? Um, and I admit I'm not a math guy, but it looked like this one was substantially underbid, both compared to what we had anticipated as well as the competitors. I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not signing up to get double the pricing, which still seemed to be fair and accurate. But, uh, I wanna make sure we're good there that, or if, if we expect that, we have tendency built, uh, what's our plan moving forward, I guess?
Okay, I will address your comments. So we, we recognize this is a really low bid. We have examined the bid, look at the items, um. It seems to be a really competitive business. It is great winter work. We think it is possible to build the project at that, at that price. Um, we also believe that our bid documents have been in a manner that would allow us to enforce those requirements as they are established, therefore preventing or protecting us from change orders. So there, there is, I would say in our field like a tight set of specifications. Um, and there is contingency in the budget. We, we have built in contingency beyond the work that we're doing today. There is in the project, but there is contingency in case there were to be, um, change conditions in the field. We were to find something that is different from what we had planned.
Okay, I, I greatly appreciate that. And I mean, I expect it nonetheless from our staff because I know you guys are, uh, super responsible and, uh, professional. It's just, I, I see such a big delta and I've seen it where we've been underbid, whether it's in the city or other work I've done. And then you hear the glass breaking, you know, right? You know, so. And it's like, oh geez, we hadn't planned for it. So as long as we feel comfortable with it, I'm, I'm good with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano.
Oh, I was gonna add to that. Um, the other benefit that we have on this particular project is we are going through undisturbed land for the most part. And a lot of times your change orders are related to things that you find underground in areas that have already been developed. And since we are looking at a raw site for this project, um, the anticipated amount of change orders is, is expected to be pretty low. We've got an excellent consultant who did the design work, who put the bid package together, and it's a very clean site. So, uh, we're, we're hoping for good things.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. And also, I mean, we've done, I have a question. We've done, uh, Big D's been a contractor for us for quite a few years. We haven't had no issues with them in the past, have we?
Um, you know, with, with every construction contract, there's always opportunities for change orders and there may be opportunities for improvement. So even if we have change orders, doesn't necessarily mean things went bad. Um, but, uh, yeah, we expect good things from Big D's. I think this is gonna be a great project and we're gonna get it done and open up that development for Budmore area.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Uh, any further comments by council? No questions? If not, uh, Councilmember Maloney, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I move to approve resolution number four zero two zero, awarding the Northwest Area Sewer L I D number one fifty-one project to Big D's Construction of Tri-Cities, Inc. of Pasco, Washington in the amount of one million seven hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-five cents, including Washington State sales tax, and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract agreement documents.
Okay, there's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that. This is Councilmember Roach.
Councilmember Roach with the second. And, uh, this is to approve resolution four zero two zero. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And pass it unanimously. All right, next we go to, uh, COVID nineteen response. Manager Zabel.
So council, this is a follow-up, a discussion you had at your, uh, November twenty-third workshop. And, uh, certainly council's done a lot, uh, over the past eight months in response to COVID. And, uh, you know, I would say it's, it's been, uh, in a response, right? We, uh, none, nobody's had time to, to, uh, do some pre-thinking. And, uh, what we've been doing is having to respond to a national emergency that's impacted our community and continues to still do that. Uh, you, you put out business assistance, you've, uh, helped individuals with utility and rental assistance. Um, there's just been a number of things, uh, that the city's done. We've recalibrated city services. Uh, and then going forward though, you know, we, we know more today than we did, uh, two months ago or four months ago or eight months ago when this all started. And, uh, which led to the conversation you had, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Yeah, where council was kinda focused on, now that we have a little bit of time to think and catch our breath, uh, I kinda took that conversation to be a bit of a, let's put some filters, not, not necessarily filters, but, um, principles out there as to, this is what's gonna drive council's response in the future. So we're, we're kinda moving from that phase of reacting to, I guess, strategically reacting or strategically even planning for, for the next positives we step, uh, steps we take as, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, and its impacts on the community and our response to it, uh, continue to unfold. And, uh, and I, I say continue to unfold while at the same time, we're learning more and more. I had a great conversation with the, uh, Chief Gear today about the fact that, uh, we're just a couple of weeks away from at least our paramedics having the vaccine available to them. So things are progressing, uh, extremely well. I, I don't think anybody could have anticipated what was gonna happen, uh, in February for this year. And I don't think anybody would have anticipated in June or July that we'd be talking about vaccines in December. So, uh, this has been anything but predictable. And so we, we put together based on, uh, council's discussion, some, a number, well, a resolution uh, that included a number of those principles, uh, that are included in your gender report as well as in the resolution, uh, that just kinda outlines council's, I guess, filter by which their future actions and communications are gonna be guided. And I, I guess, staff supports it, I, excuse me, proposes, uh, uh, this is our best attempt at trying to capture that discussion. And, uh, I don't know that I necessarily wanna go through all, all the seven principles, but I, I'm, hopefully council's had an opportunity to review those, uh, and, uh, would encourage council to discuss those tonight. And, uh, if, if, uh, appropriate, uh, amend them or revise them as admitted.
Thank you. Manager Dave Zabel, any comments or questions from the council? If not, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Serrano.
Hey, I appreciate the time that staff has taken to address this. Um, I know it was in response to our meeting and I know a handful of council members, including myself, had emailed staff and asked them to look into things. Uh, the first thing I asked to look into was the City of Mossy Rock's ordinance. Um, I don't know that we can justify what they did, which is ultimately saying that until they have further information, that there is in fact a state of emergency since, uh, what they're indicating is both in Lewis County and the city itself, there have been no or very few deaths related to COVID. Um, but weighing that against the responsibility of municipality, not just to protect the health of the citizens, but the health of the businesses of the citizens or residents. Um, I do think that we need to be more proactive and not just responsive. So again, whether or not this council's interested in taking something, a step such as Mossy Rock did, where they flat out, um, made an ordinance not recognizing the governor's proclamation until they had sufficient information that, uh, that, uh, there was a true state of emergency within the city limits itself. Um, I don't know that, again, we could justify that, but I do think we need to make sure that we're taking proactive measures to ensure that not only the health and welfare of our citizen or our residents is, is there, but the health and welfare of, of our businesses. So, um, I would like to see us looking forward and taking proactive measures, not just reactive measures. I do appreciate what staff has done so far. Um, we've done a phenomenal job. Uh, but I, I'm a firm believer that we need to do more, um, for both our businesses and our residents. And again, if council's interested in, in a Mossy Rock tech ordinance, I, I would certainly support something like that where we request that the city attorney, uh, request further data from the Health District of, of what the true impacts to Pasco, not just the county are. And, um, whether or not there are other measures that the city could take to protect those same vulnerable individuals or not, I don't know. Um, but that's my take. I, I think we need to do more. I've heard a lot from businesses that are struggling, that may never reopen and people who are, you know, having mental health crises, um, including suicide, family and friends. Um, we're protecting those who are vulnerable to COVID, but not those who are just generally, generally vulnerable to other things. So, uh, we need to do something more. we need to do something more.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Anybody else?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
You know, I, I, I certainly echo Mr. Serrano's comments about how, how important it's been for the, the work that the city staff has put together. I think that when you look at this, this resolution, I think it does give that, that, those bones, that framework for us to build on. None of this stuff tells us how we're gonna approach this, but it really kind of brings us together, I think, and, and with some consensus as to what things are really critically important to us. So I think this will give us the framework to help start, you know, pushing back where appropriate and pushing for, for the right resources to, 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 to weather this storm. Fortunately, we can, we can see a little bit of a blue sky on the horizons, but it's still unfortunately a long ways away. Given that we're currently in the midst of the highest spike in, in cases and our, our, I'm understanding that our hospitals are starting to fill up again. You know, there is certainly some actions we need to take to make sure we're protecting our community and and balancing that against, you know, how, how do we, how do we help a city run? Ultimately, I think one of the things that it's really important for, for the community that's listening to, to this meeting, there's a limited amount that the City of Pasco can actually do. You know, it's a state that is enforcing, you know, shutting down restaurants and bars. You know, it's, it's not a city ordinance. We're not out there finding people. But you know, we're, we're trying to, as, as Mr. Martinez starts every one of these meetings, you know, really highlighting that this is leading by example and, and supporting in the best ways we can within the scope of what the city can do. So I think this, this, this resolution, I think, is a, is a, is a good middle ground that helps us really set up that framework for for actions to take as we're talking to our, you know, congressional delegates at the federal level and at the state level. And in terms of what we can, what we, what we need as City of Pasco to, to survive as best we can for all our businesses and our community members.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. I, I would just like to add that I agree with you, Councilmember Serrano, and there's always more we can do. But I think this resolution captures what we've done. I think we've answered the call. We've, and this is just a way to capture what we've done. You know, all this is happening and all the things that we, that this resolution is communicating has been in addition to running our city and doing the things we had to do to maintain order and, and a safe community. And I appreciate so much all the efforts from the council, all the way to, to the staff and everybody who's done all these things that, that are mentioned in this resolution. And I, I think it's worthy to just real quickly just mention the, the bullets. Business assistance grants, utility assistance grants, rental assistance grants, business reopening kits, regional coordination efforts, continuity of city services. I mean, all these things, we were answering the call to our community while trying to run the business, the day, the day-to-day operations. And this is just one form, excuse me, of capturing those things. And again, I, we can never be done. There's always more we can do. And, and I would just like to mention that as, as your mayor, myself and the other mayors have been constant, in constant communications with the, the representatives for Inslee and and advocating for the Tri-Cities to be at the table before he makes the decisions that he makes. Advocating for assistance before he makes his decisions that he makes. That's gonna be sufficient for everyone. And I, I just wanted to share that because, you know, we are doing, and I know we have been doing everything we can. And there could always be more that we could do for our community members and we, and we won't stop until, until we absolutely have nowhere to go. But we're gonna continue to fight. But again, this resolution kind of describes what we've done and the efforts we've made. And I think it's a good start. It's something we can address and change as we need to. So I'm in favor and, and we'll move right along. So any other comments from council before we make a motion?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I just wanted to say that I, I did really appreciate reading through this and reflecting on what all we've done in this pandemic, which has, you know, been less than a year, close to a year now, but you know, there is, as already been said, a lot that could be done. More that could be done. And so I, I just saw that Councilmember Alvarado is here. And I guess my two cents to this would be, you know, I know we have, well, we did have two councilmembers not present, but I, I would like to hear, you know, just their, I'd like to know that they're on, on board with it too and just have consensus on this is, is where I'm at. To me, utmost importance is the, the health and well-being of our residents. And that includes businesses. You know, what's happening is really heartbreaking to see so many people unemployed and you know, taking a, a nosedive from there in their life. So whatever we can do to prevent that from continuing to spiral, spiral downward, I'm in favor of helping our, our people.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. So Councilmember Alvarado, did I, are you on the line now?
Yes, I'm on now. I missed the earlier start date, so my apologies. I'd have to catch, catch myself up here, so no comment at this point.
All right, thank you. So Councilmember Maloney, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number four zero two one, declaring city council statement on COVID nineteen response.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Serrano?
Yep.
Councilmember Serrano with a second. All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that, council. And we'll go to the next item on the agenda, item number nine, unfinished business. We have an ordinance to amend the PMC six dot zero five dot zero one zero. Definitions, potentially dangerous animals. Director Radkai, would you like to kick us off with the beginning of this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The ordinance brought before you this evening is, like you said, to amend various sections of six point zero five of the Pasco Municipal Code pertaining to the restrictions on specific dog breeds. Specific to the changes contained within the ordinance, the removal of listing of specific dog breeds is found within six point zero five point zero one zero. Additional changes worked through the city legal department in conjunction with the city prosecutor pertaining to enforcement and penalties, transfer of ownership are found within six point zero five point three three zero of the ordinance, which is attached to the staff report this evening. We've talked about this a lot at previous workshops. We do have legal staff on at the meeting this evening. If there's any questions from council.
Thank you, Director Radkai. Questions or comments from the council? Do you have any? Again, as Director Radkai mentioned, we have legal joining us tonight. If we have any questions for them?
Yeah, this is Serrano. I had a question. I, I think there was some flow-through language. And I don't, is that what I'm seeing in subsection six A as well as seven? As I recall, there was some language just didn't flow when we modified it. So I just want to confirm that we caught everything that we believe was, you know, kind of applicable that, that didn't quite flow once we amended it.
Yeah, Councilmember Serrano, city manager here. So I, I think what you're referring to, we had had a, a pretty lengthy public, a piece of public input. And I, I don't remember the individual's name, but made some good points on that. And we did follow through that, take a look at that and made sure that what we did up in zero one zero followed through consistently down in six oh five, three three zero.
Okay, okay. That's, that's what I thought I was seeing. I just wanted to confirm that that was what we were looking for to resolve that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Councilman Milney, and I just wanted to say that I was appreciative of the staff, that they were able to get this done before the end of the year. I know I'm still getting a lot of emails and I don't afford this ordinance. Say I really appreciate the staff being able to move this forward and get it done in a timely manner. So it's it means a lot that we get a chance to vote on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Milney. Anybody else?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I just wanted to say as well, thanks to staff, but thank you to the community members who have really taken it upon themselves to educate us and the rest of the community about this issue. And for their, for their patience.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. All right, if there's no one.
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yeah, again, ditto with my colleagues here as far as congratulatory as I could be. Just excited to be able to move this forward. Also, you know, just cautious as well and just want to make sure that we're not doing something that's going to affect our, our city in a negative way. I, I don't believe so. But I look, look forward to just being able to dog owners more and just seeing how we can come together as a community to be a better community than we were in the past. And yeah, just excited about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. And I'll, I'll have one last words. And I just want to share with everyone that I had a really tough time with this ordinance and changing it. Because to me, the safety of our community and our children in our neighborhoods is priority and very, very important to me. I, I appreciate staff and, and our legal counsel who was able to word this in a manner, and I had to come, you know, with, I had to come to terms with the fact that and what I really, what I really satisfied with this is that it's not just a specific breed, but it's all animals. I don't care what they look like or who they are. If they're gonna be a dangerous animal, they need to be tended to appropriately. And it took me a while to grasp that because I didn't want to let go and diminish the, the the, the, the safety of our, of our community and our kids and our neighborhoods. But I also want to, I also want to share that there are so many people who are adamant about this change. And I want to, I want to commend them because not one time during this whole process, it's taken several, multiple months that they were ever disrespectful and were ever out of line. They did this in a manner which they, they showed up to prove their point, to, to educate us and to help us to move along. And I'm just so glad that we were able to come to an agreement where, where perhaps this, this can maintain the safety for our community members and also taking into consideration the passion and love they have for these specific dogs. And knowing that not all of them were bad, but it was just, you know, with all the literature and all the things that were provided to us, it came to a realization that that perhaps, you know, we did need to look into this. And I think we've done a, a good job in making it read the way it does. And again, I want to commend the people who were passionate about this subject and, and the way you conducted yourself in our council meetings. And although all your emails were somewhat of a pain, that's what it took for us to, to, to pay attention and, and we heard your voice. And so that's, that, that's the way things are done in our democracy and, and the way things should be done in a very civil, professional and respectful manner. And I think that because they were able to do that, that we were able to come to this agreement where perhaps we can all be satisfied and we can all take responsibility for these actions and, and this ordinance that we're gonna pass tonight. So thank you very much for that. And with that, I'll end and ask Councilmember Maloney for a motion.
Hey, Mayor, I, I apologize. I have one quick comment. I should have read this closer, but in six oh five oh one oh, under the definition of potentially dangerous animal, section C is in Charlie, we may have to revisit this because in my, and I'm not an animal lawyer, but it talks about known propensity, tendency and disposition to attack or cause injury. Those seem pretty vague. And I could be wrong, maybe council has a different position on this, but I think subsection Charlie, under that definition, with striking D seems to me to leave us to a challenge of vagueness. And maybe there's more to that that council can opine on. And, and I'm fine passing this as is, but if there's a concern of its vagueness, we need to address that quickly if we're going to adopt that tonight. And I apologize. I should have caught this earlier. But I didn't.
Okay. Yes, Manager Zabel.
Yeah, if, if I could, Councilmember Serrano, and, and I, I believe city attorney's on the line and probably want to jump on board, but we did go through this, this change as well as three three zero, I think, six A down below with the city prosecutor. Who's had the, I guess, the duty to enforce this code. Matter of fact, A, the language in, in three three zero, six A below is, as you might note, new language. So with that, I maybe turn it over to Eric or Craig. I'm not sure which, who's on.
Yeah, no, it's, it's Eric. I'm on tonight. But yeah, I believe it's a dangerous animal. That definition is taken from the statute, I believe, but we could do some more digging on it, but as of the way it's written currently, what it would do is it would be able to be applied, excuse me, be able to be applied in a situation where the, the, the key word I think is that they're known so that it would have to be the probable cause for the town master to be able to come up with probable cause. They would have to either witness that or have reliable information to be able to prove that. That would exclude using a dog's breed as a way to get that probable cause to meet that standard. So our prosecutor has reviewed it and he's comfortable with it. And he's as conservative as they come with the definition. I think we're in pretty good shape, but we're certainly happy to take another one again.
No, I, I, I think we're good. I appreciate that explanation because I guess if I'm looking at it again, you know, that's a modifier to the specific animal, not a breed. And that was my main concern is that, you know, that type of generic language could lead to breed-specific activity on behalf of the town master or, or the attorney. So that's okay. I just, I just want to make sure we weren't accidentally writing ourselves back into the same situation.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Serrano for that. All right, Councilmember Maloney, would you like to make a motion?
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four five one two, amending the Pasco Municipal Code, section six dot oh five dot oh one oh, definition of terms, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes, this is Councilman Milney. I'll second that.
Councilmember Milney with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. Next, we'll go on to item ten, new business, collective bargaining agreement with International Association of Firefighters and local number one four three three. And we have a report from Colleen, Human Resources or?
Yeah, I, I will kick it off and then ask Colleen to jump in. So council, this is with our International Association of Firefighters, local fourteen thirty-three. And this represents all firefighters and paramedics from firefighter basically through the rank of battalion chief. So basically, the, you know, ninety, ninety-five percent of the, of the entire department. So with that, their agreement was gonna be expiring toward the end of this calendar year. And they've been very active and engaged with the city throughout this COVID process, knowing it was in a year where their agreement was going to expire. And they actually had asked to start negotiations early. And we did so. And Director Chapin serves as our chief negotiator in labor contracts. And I'm gonna turn it over to her to talk a little bit about the negotiations, but I, I will kick them off by saying they were you, you would have been extremely impressed by the approach that the, the local took. Understanding the uncertainties financially the city was up against earlier this year and even now, without knowing where, where this COVID thing's gonna take us from a financial standpoint. And I'd also mention that I think that that approach comes from a, a lot of years now, you know, several, four, three, four cycles now of, you know, some, I think some really good faith, interest-based bargaining that we've been working with the unit on. you know, some, I think some really good faith, uh, interest-based bargaining that we've been working with the unit on, uh, to try to find when wins. And there's been a lot of trust built up. And with that, uh, is, uh, Colleen's been a big part of that. I want to turn this over to Director Chapin.
Director Chapin, you on the line?
I am.
Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, a good, good evening again, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm really pleased to, uh, bring this ratified contract, um, to you for, for your ratification. Uh, as the city manager is able said, we have worked for a number of years to establish a mutual respect between the management bargaining team and the, the immune bargaining team. And we have worked very closely with them. And they came forward with bargaining with a true understanding of the difficulties that the city may be facing this year and the many duties that they themselves had to do in regards to COVID. They asked to meet with us early and so that we could, uh, try to come to an agreement before the end of the contract. This is an interest arbitration group. And, uh, so it's important to make sure that we are marketable and that we have a collective bargaining agreement that is current when we're trying to recruit for new employees or we're having, uh, people leave through retirements that they would have the opportunity to have, uh, parity with their other comparable agencies without throughout the state. That's part of what's required in an interest arbitration group. Um, so they, they came forward with a real interest, as did we in working through these cycles with them to get the contract completed before the expiration date. So there was less uncertainty for the city and for the membership as they go forward. Uh, they do have the ability to go to interest arbitration. However, that is expensive for both, uh, unit and for management. And in sitting down with them, again, the mutual respect that we had across the table from the management team, uh, was very rewarding in the years that I've been here and working with them. They, uh, came with reasonable, uh, demands and we wanted to make sure that we stayed within, uh, parity with the other fire departments of similar size throughout the city. And so their proposal was very reasonable. We met and were able to get this, uh, contract ratified in the same day, which is, um, I think remarkable under the circumstances. They are requesting a two-year contract, which will be for the calendar years two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. So this contract will expire at the end of two thousand and twenty-two. We agreed and they have ratified a one percent wage increase for two thousand and twenty-one with a point five or half a percent uh, increase in their contribution to their deferred compensation, which, you know, we've talked about earlier with the other, uh, groups that were not represented. And in January of two thousand and twenty-two, they will, they have bargained for a one hundred percent of the CPIU, which is the, uh, consumer price index unit that we use that does not compare them with Seattle and Portland, but more of the urban cities. And that is, uh, with a minimum of one percent and a maximum of three. And that will not be something that we know until July of two thousand and twenty-one. And then an additional point five percent, uh, contribution to their deferred comp. Again, fire, uh, department does not receive, uh, social, does not do social security, um, contributions. So deferred comp is a way in which they, they, uh, make up for that in regards to their retirement for the future. So again, we're very appreciative of the union coming to the table and the working relationship that we've developed with them over the years. And we would recommend ratification of agreement.
Thank you, Director Chapin. Any questions or comments from council?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Roach. And before we have further discussion, I just wanted to, um, disclose that uh, fourteen thirty-three endorsed me last year and, um, if it pleases, uh, the rest of council, I can recuse myself from voting on this, but I feel that I can be fair in this matter.
Well, thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Roach. Um, I guess that would be a question for, uh, Eric, uh, our legal counsel. I mean, is there any reason why, uh, with the disclosure she couldn't be impartial or fair?
No, what, uh, it would really come down to is if Ms. Roach has any kind of contractual relationship with, uh, what she's about to vote on, with, uh, the issue that she's about to vote on, if she has any, uh, contractual interest, uh, uh, she would have to go through a process to determine whether, uh, that can be limited uh, to the degree that she could still vote, but, uh, with no, uh, uh, actual, uh, contract interest, uh, in, in the contract that's before her voting, um, an endorsement wouldn't arise to that, obviously.
I do not have any contractual agreement with fourteen thirty-three.
Then as far as I'm concerned, uh, I, I would be okay with it, Councilmember Roach. Any other, uh, comments or questions from council?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I certainly have no, no objection to, um, Ms. Roach, um, voting on this matter, but, um, I just wanted to say that, you know, in the, in the spirit of a little bit of some of the stuff we're seeing tonight, you know, in, um, terms of making our employees, uh, you know, of the city, uh, financially compensated appropriately. You know, again, this is, this has been something that's, that's longstanding that we've been, um, we've been struggling to take bites out of. And I think this is, when you look at the, uh, the terms of this agreement, this is a modest increase again. Uh, and I, I do, I also appreciate our, our, especially our, our, our first responders, um, across the board and how much they've had to, had to do this year and, and years past. I think we're really seeing the, the high quality of services they provide. So, um, I certainly am supportive of this, uh, of this bargaining agreement and, uh, intend to vote to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. I can, I can assure you, uh, that, that the services we're getting from our first responders in this fire department is bar none. We'll go up against anybody from anywhere. I'm just proud of them. And, um, I see just in other, uh, areas and places that I've seen and again, it's, it's not something that, uh, is overwhelming what they're asking for. And, um, and I'm more than willing, um, I think this is just pretty standard in any, any corporation that, uh, that these requests were, were made at this, at this rate. So, those are my comments. If, if there's no other comments, one last chance. Then we'll move right along to a motion, uh, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with I A F F, local number fourteen thirty-three for years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
This is Councilmember Alvarado. I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and it's seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. Uh, to move and approve the collective bargaining agreement with the I A F F. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? It passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Next we'll go to personal services agreement for animal control services. Director Radke.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of council. The item brought before you this evening is a personal services agreement with NEOs Nation Foundation, who won the RFP to provide shelter and animal control services for the Tri-Cities Animal Control Authority, um, for two thousand and twenty-one. As some of you may know, the current operator of the animal shelter and our animal control services, um, elected not to renew their contract, which thus expires at the end of this year on December thirty-first. So the, in light of that, the city, um, as a chief administrator of the Animal Control Authority, issued a request for proposal in October seeking a new director for this service. Uh, the ACA, um, Animal Control Authority, received three responses, which includes, um, um, three local candidates for the, uh, for the, the job in a sense. Um, after discussion, uh, um, and review of the RFP responses, uh, the Animal Control Authority, uh, which has a representative from each of the three cities, interviewed all the candidates and had discussion with city leadership in concurrence with the ILA of the Animal Control Authority. So, in concurrence with all that, NEOs Nation was selected for the contract. Uh, the contract, uh, for two thousand and twenty-one, it will not to, uh, is set to not to exceed eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, it will be paid on a one-third, one-third, one-third share basis between the cities of Pasco, Kennewick and Richland. Um, it'll be in effect for two thousand and twenty-one with, uh, mutual renewal options for extensions incorporated, uh, within. Um, the motion provides, uh, provided to council this evening in the staff report allows city manager to execute the contract, uh, subject to any modifications. And with that, I'll take any questions of the city council.
Thank you, Director Radke. Any questions or comments for Director Radke?
This is Councilwoman Maloney. I, I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead, uh, council member.
Thank you. Um, so, Mr. Radke, I, I don't want you to speculate or disclose any private information that might have been shared with you, but are there any specific terms of the contract that are creating significant hardships? Um, often folks don't want to leave a role that, and, and, yeah, requires this level of passion and, and, and commitment to unless there are some other things going on. But are there, is there anything in the contract that's maybe, um, was, is key? Um, because I would be interested if, if we need to see, especially as we move forward on building, um, a new shelter, if there's something that we need to do to modify the contract to make it, um, more approachable, more effective to, to manage. Um, I'd be interested in understanding what that might be.
Um, in relation to the current contract, there's really nothing contractual, uh, to my knowledge, that's, uh, worked into the decision not to renew the contract. Um, for two thousand and twenty-one and working with NEOs Nation, uh, the ACA will be taking, uh, more of a partnership approach to work on, you know, performance measures and, uh, reporting as well as just assessing that our level of service is, um, up to par or where we can specifically improve, um, or maintain, uh, levels of service to the community.
Okay, thank you. If you do find anything out in the future, I would be interested, um, and, and supportive at least, um, identifying where we can, where we can make some changes there if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anybody else? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion. Um, I move to approve the, the personal services agreement with NEOs Nation for professional animal control and shelter management services and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement subject to modifications.
Okay, I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that. This is Councilmember Roach.
Councilmember Roach with a second. So this motion is to approve personal services agreement with NEOs Nation for professional animal control and shelter management. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? It passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. And now we go to item C, professional services agreement. Uh, PACE Engineering Columbia East Pump Station and Force Main Amendment Number Five. Director Warley, would you like to fill this in?
Mr. Mayor and council members, once again, uh, the last item for tonight is to look at an amendment to PACE Engineering's contract for the design of the Columbia East Lift Station and Force Main project. Uh, council has heard about these projects. It's related to the process water reuse facility. They've heard about it many times. This particular one was a big project that was started early in, uh, two thousand and eighteen and consisted of, uh, the lift station and the force main project to get some of the Columbia East processors' wastewater flows up to the reuse facility. Um, early on, we entered into a contract with PACE engineers and the design of the project started, uh, early on in the project, it was decided to split the project into two individual parts. The first part was the lift station, which, uh, is now complete in terms of construction. And the second project was the force main. The force main project, as is not uncommon for many projects that require right-of-way acquisition, has taken some twists and turns. Uh, in this case, it might even be literal. Um, we have, uh, gone around a couple of times on the location of the force main look, uh, pipeline because of negotiations with property owners. And due to that, uh, we have had to change the alignment. And each time, uh, we changed the alignment, uh, some changes to the design had to be incorporated into it. As part of that, we evaluated some of the additional costs associated with it. And, uh, early in the project, it was determined that we, uh, we're going to reduce the scope of the project from two lines to one line and build it within the public right-of-way of Capitol Avenue. And we had some EDA grant funding for the project. And we went back to EDA for approval to reduce the scope. And while we were talking with them about that, we became aware of some additional, uh, CARES Act infrastructure funding that was available. And so even though we proceeded with the design of a single force main, with this new federal CARES Act funding for infrastructure projects, we were able to work with the staff at EDA and just recently found out that they appear to be willing to give us double the amount of grant money than what we originally were awarded. And so the increase in federal funds would go from three million dollars for this project up to six million dollars for this project. So with that additional funding, we are now able to put the second line back into the project and move forward. And so in order to do that, because PACE engineers had completed the design of the single line, we now need to amend PACE's contract to do the additional work necessary to design the second line. It may seem easy to add a second line to the design, but staff and the PACE engineers went through a process and we, it is more difficult than we thought because of some of the utilities that are in there. It's not as easy as putting one line next to the other. And we recently went through a workshop to work our way through all those different details. And so, um, this, uh, item is to request a amendment to PACE's contract. And the reason we're coming to council is that there have been several amendments to their contract through the course of this project. And we have now run up against the city manager's authorization for contract amendments. Therefore, we're having to bring this to council now to get council's approval for this last amendment for the design phase of the project. So with that, um, Maria Serra is here joining us and she would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Warley. Uh, any questions or comments from council?
Just congratulations on the increased, uh, grant funding. Nice job.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Ditto. Anybody else?
This is Council, this is Councilwoman Maloney. I was, I was going to say the same thing. Um, you know, when we look at how many different things seem to cost us more money and take more time. And, uh, you know, we have to be deliberative and we have to do the process correctly. And I, I've, I've been through projects where we've taken these sort of, you know, literal and figurative twists and turns. And, um, I applaud your, your diligence in, uh, um, making sure that we can get there, um, meet the need, but then also find those opportunities for additional funding to make this happen. So I'm, I'm excited. This is, uh, this is huge for our community to keep, keep those, uh, uh, keep this sort of project going. So I'm, I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anybody else? Yeah, it's always exciting to, uh, to be able to move forward with these kind of projects, uh, because, um, you know, we don't always see it from the public side, but these are the projects that, uh, that allow for our infrastructure to grow and to provide, uh, more opportunity for our, our, our citizens and residents of the city. And I just appreciate that and, uh, and thankful for that. So, so, uh, thank you for the work that's been put into this, uh, for you and your staff, Director Warley.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that, uh, Maria gets the bulk of the credit for that. She has been working on this EDA grant for over three years. And so, um, most of that credit goes to her for her diligence in pursuing that grant funding.
Well, of course. She's, I'll just keep it at that. Thank you very much, Maria, for, for your work and efforts on this. Appreciate it very much. Well, with that, uh, direct, our, uh, Councilmember Maloney, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would. I move to approve amendment number five to the, for the professional services agreement with PACE Engineering, uh, for the Columbia East Force Main and Lift Station Project and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Okay, there, is there a second?
This is Councilmember Roach. I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Roach in this to approve amendment number five for the professional services agreement with PACE Engineering, uh, for the Columbia East Force Main and Lift Station Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And it passes unanimously. Whew. Well, thank you for that, uh, staff and council. Uh, next we go into our next item, miscellaneous discussion. Would you like to kick it off?
Mayor, I did have a, a couple of things, uh, and I actually don't, I, I did, I sent you a report earlier, uh, this afternoon about, uh, our testing site numbers. I don't really want to go into those this evening. I wasn't sure how long this agenda was.
I wasn't sure how long this agenda was going to go, and I appreciate the council letting us start early. You try to predict these things. I wasn't thinking we were going to be done at 7:30. So thank you all for that effort to make that happen. So this is the last Monday night of the year, based on your prior action. And it's been, it's been really one heck of a year, and I don't think anyone could have predicted, as I said earlier, back last December, what 2020 was going to look like. And I want to thank the council. I also want to recognize the council. Mayor Martinez, I know you had a former active year, your first year as mayor than you were expecting, and certainly staff. And Mayor, I appreciate your comment earlier tonight that while there's some things that probably didn't get done, we were able to keep our basic services moving. We're able to keep moving forward. As most recent example, the project Columbia East Main, or East Forest Main project, we're able to keep our projects moving forward and make some pretty good progress on a lot of those. And so my hat's off to all of our staff, to council, to the mayor. This has been a really interesting and unusual time, kind of a, I guess, a once in a, once in a century experience that we've all been going through, and certainly our community members. You know, our numbers, I think at the testing station, they're a really good tribute to Chief Gear and some of his staff and a bunch of our retired firefighters that wanted to staff that, continue to give back as well as the contractor we have working out there. But they're really more of a tribute to the citizens of the community, that they're getting on board with the program. They're wearing the masks. They're doing their testing to try to keep the community safe. And I think that says a lot about Pasco. It says a lot about our Benton County residents across the river using our test site as well. And then on a separate, probably more somber note, December 7th is a pretty unique day in our history where that was the attack on Pearl Harbor and brought us all into World War II. Not actually anybody in this council meeting, perhaps some that might listen to it maybe. But brought us all into World War II and, you know, ultimately, I don't know, cost millions of lives. Yeah, but we all survived it and will survive, will survive this pandemic as well. But just wanted to share those thoughts with council tonight and more importantly, just thank council for a great year.
Thank you, Manager Dave Zabel. And I want to allow the council to give its parting words for 2020 since we've elected to, for this to be our last Monday meeting. Who wants to begin?
As long as you're, Mr. Mayor, as long as you're the one who wraps it up, I'll go first, I guess, and say my eloquent words so you can wrap it up with your much more effective voice for that. And I'd just like to echo what Mr. Zabel was saying in terms of just how incredibly bizarre this year has been. And I would certainly applaud my fellow councilmembers and the city staff for how successful we've been at making the transition. This has been relatively seamless. I think a lot of communities really struggled, both with technology, with effectiveness at responding to the pandemic and the shutdown orders. And I think we've done a fair job of being able to advocate for the community and try to provide those services. And I am just extraordinarily proud of this council and our city and our staff and the people of the City of Pasco. We are resilient people and we are, we're tough as nails and we work hard. So, you know, I'm just grateful to be part of this community and have the opportunity to provide a little bit of help on doing my part. So, you know, I'm grateful for our community. And I think, you know, I think the thing that encapsulates our hope and resilience the most is at our council retreat, you know, it's not that we didn't know that COVID was a big deal, right? But we were still being able to focus on the future, knowing that we have such a strong, bright future in front of us as Pasco. So I just can't say enough to how grateful I am for this council and for our staff and the people of Pasco. So just have a great rest of your year and be ready to get back to work helping the city in January. So thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Appreciate those words. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Councilman Milne. And I'd like to say, again, I appreciate everything in the staff. And I did get a chance to meet up with Councilwoman Roach and Councilman Maloney last week. And it was so nice just to see them. We went over the COVID facility, but talk about the road going through there and the noise. But it's just, I miss you guys so much. It's kind of great that we haven't seen each other. And when you finally get a chance to do something together, it's just a breath of fresh air. So thank you so much. And again, I can't wait to get back in the council chambers and have discussions with all of you. And then I did have a kind of a question for Director Radke as far as where are we at with the animal shelters since this year is wrapping up? Could you kind of give us a quick update just since we did the breed-specific language? And I know there's people out there listening wanting to know where we are with that.
Sure, I think we've done some behind-the-scenes things since we've worked with the, did a workshop with the other two cities here in the tri-cities about the possibilities for a new shelter. To be honest, Councilman Milne, our focus really has been on getting the director and maintaining the operations and the passing of the baton to the new year, as well as working through the breed-specific language issues. So I think probably at the beginning of next year, we'll have more of a comprehensive update on the shelter. But that we're still working through some of the details there since we've last reported to council.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And again, I also wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. So hopefully 2021 will be a lot better year as far as being able to get together.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Appreciate it. Anyone else would like to share the last words for the year?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
I certainly want to thank my colleague councilmembers and you, Mayor. I think this has been a specially difficult year for me with a lot of challenges early in the year and more recently with the death of my mother. Just to be able to hold the fort while, you know, I missed a few council meetings and, you know, try my best to stay abreast of things. But I certainly felt the support from council, from friends. And I think that, you know, on top of all the other things that were happening, you know, it was definitely a year of development for me. And so I certainly have learned a lot in looking forward to next year applying some of those things and looking at even this position from a Logan of a different lens. But yeah, I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. And definitely just want to be thankful to our, the folks who, you know, the reason why we're here are all of our neighbors. You know, they're working hard. They're wanting to make our city better. And they put us in a position to be able to make some decisions on their behalf. And, you know, I just, I just hope that this year we've done them proud as much as we could to make sure that we can advocate for them as much as we can. And I certainly appreciate everyone here and all of our residents in our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado.
This is Councilmember Roach, and I just want to say, Councilmember Alvarado, I'm really sorry for your loss. That is a big thing to lose a mother. On that same note, just last week, I lost my great uncle to COVID. And, you know, happened in a matter of three days of him going to the hospital. And I just want to say to everybody who might be watching that, you know, we have, we have no idea what people are carrying with them right now. Just immense amount of tension and stress. And so just remember to be kind to everybody that you encounter. I want to say that a year ago, I had one of the proudest moments of my life, which was being sworn in to the city council alongside of Councilmember Milne and Councilmember Alvarado. It has been, you know, an honor to serve even virtually the way that we have. Not the most ideal way, but still, I feel really humbled to be able to serve this community. And I'm grateful for the opportunity even in this crisis. I want to say that the last year, I got to be a part of, for the first time, the City of Pasco Award Ceremony that goes to staff. And I thought it was brilliant. It was just so fun and enlightening to learn who the staff are and who, how many of them shine, what they do. And I got to learn all of that before COVID. And now this year, I've been feeling this ache for wishing to honor and recognize them because while I feel like council does an important job, the staff does an even more important job. They've switched foot, you know, been able to work from home, figure out how to juggle their job, their, you know, possibly sick family members, kids at home, and it's just so much. And so I just want to say to the community that City of Pasco staff are heroes. And so just have a huge amount of gratitude for them. So, you know, thank you. Thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Appreciate those words. You want to take a crack at it, Councilmember Toronto?
Sure. I don't think I can add to what's been said. It's been a year. As Councilwoman Roach said, we're all under various pressures and stresses and carrying some burden. You know, in looking at Facebook memes throughout the past year, I think probably the one that resonates with what was said and what needs to be said is, don't forget, you know, we're all in this storm together. And some of us are drowning, some of us are safely on yachts, and some are in canoes. And some are just holding on to the iceberg, right? 2020 has been a very difficult year that none of us had anticipated. I'm proud of, as the fellow councilmembers have said, what I believe we've been able to accomplish and to stay engaged with the community. I hope that the community doesn't feel too disenfranchised with the way that we're forced into meeting. Please know that we do hear you. I think the BSL discussion tonight is strong evidence of that. We are reachable electronically. We are reachable through our telephonically. We are here to serve you and we aim to do our best. And sometimes our best is not what you want. Sometimes it's not what we want. But we will keep fighting to help Pasco be what Pasco is. I'm extremely proud to be a Pasco resident. I feel like I'm an adopted child, and I'm grateful for that. So with that, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday Season. And, you know, may God grant us a wonderful 2021 and holiday season as we can.
Thank you, Councilmember Toronto. Appreciate those words as well. And I'd like to just shout out to Mayor Protem Blanchparraja who couldn't be here tonight. So if you're listening, I'm sure you are, Mayor Protem. Thank you for all your efforts and everything you do. And I'm sure that the community knows your passion. And I know that they feel like you saying Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to them as well. So I just wanted to say that for our Mayor Protem. And so with that, we will not be having an executive session tonight, but I will just want to part with these words before we adjourn. You know, and what comes to my mind is just perspective. You know, we talk about 2020 and what a year, you know, just like we can remember 911. We can remember Pearl Harbor. We remember certain days of our lives that maybe we can always go back to and know exactly what you were doing that day. This is very interesting because I don't know that I could say in my life that I can go back to a year. I mean, it's always a day or an event that happened, but not a year. And I think that's what the significance of this pandemic in 2021 has, the impact it's had in my life. And I would have, in perspective, you know, if you were born in, I was listening to the radio the other day, and if you were born in the early 1900s, to go through all the things that happened in this country, it really, it really made me feel little, you know, for what they've been through in their 80, 90 years of life compared to, you know, what we've gone through with this one pandemic. It made me really appreciate that although we're suffering in many ways and we're, and none of us are exempt. Councilmember Alvarado, my prayers and sympathy goes to you and your family for losing your loved ones. And there's so many more that have lost their loved ones this year to either COVID or any other purpose. And my heart goes out to you and I just pray that, that, you know, you... I'm going to get through it. So I just pray that you guys have, keep the strength to continue on. So for me, what helps me is, you know, just perspective. And, you know, despite how bad we had it, we've had it this year. You know, these people who were born in the early 1900s, they didn't even have the resources that we have today. They didn't have internet. They didn't have Netflix. They didn't have all these things that we can actually have to utilize our time in a productive way. And, and so I appreciate the little bit that we did get. I appreciate the positive things that came out of this year, and that is the unity and the resilience that everybody in this community has shown. And, you know, to be, to be where we're at today here in the City of Pasco and to go through all the things that this country has been through and feeling the same things such as the Black Lives Matter movement and how our community came together and did it with respect and did it with honor and not caused the problems that other places faced. The emergency responders that provided all the assistance through all these hard times for us, whether it's the fire station, firefighters, the police officers, all the things that we went through this year. And still, we are a community that still cares for each other. That is a gift, and that just tells me how strong we really are. And, you know, and just coming together in the time of need, all the nonprofits, our union gospel mission, our, all of our organizations that help feed people who are in need in our community. Everybody stepped up to the plate despite our difficulties. They always came up with the resources that we needed to continue on. Even our, our, our mental and health issues that we've had in this, in this community, we've stepped up and did what we could. And those are the wonderful things that I'm trying to get out of this year. And I would have never thought in a million years that I would ever be mayor. And as Councilwoman Roach said, she had one of the best days of her life last year about this time. You know, I would have never dreamed of sitting here as a representative of this passionate council to lead as a mayor after having such great leadership in the past with the rest of our council members and our former mayor Matt Watkins, who I am still a little mad at at this point. But however, we were all here. We were all put here for a purpose, and I think we've answered the call. I think we've each stepped up and did what we're supposed to do, and that's why we're this resilient community that we are today. And all I can hope for, council and staff, is that sometime between now and December of 2021, that we will see the light to say how much it was worth coming together and showing the whole nation that we are a model community, that we can show that despite our differences, we'll celebrate those things we have in common but respect our differences and just move forward, making this community the best community to live in. It's one of the fastest-growing and one of the greatest communities we could ever ask for in this country. And I'm just glad to be here to receive that. So with that, I would just like to again thank the whole community for who you are and for who we're going to become and how, with the strength that we've built over this year, we're going to make 2021 as best year ever and as best that we can make it. And that's all I ask. So with that, have a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and know that, again, I'm so proud of this. And, uh, and know that, again, I'm so proud of this council, how passionate they are. And it doesn't surprise me that they were chosen to be here at this time because we needed, each and every one of the characteristics that they provide for our council. I appreciate you guys very much and the support that I feel from each and every one of you. And again, my prayers and heart goes out to those who, uh, who have lost loved ones this year. But, uh, take, take what we can from, uh, this, this, this Christmas we got and then Happy New Year. And, uh, and may God bless everybody, uh, in this beautiful community. So with that, uh, thank you for everything. It's 7:50 and we, uh, will now adjourn this meeting.